For our country and its leaders. Being an elected here, we're afraid that you will continue to bring us leaders that would know your heart and look to you for guidance. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings we have. Help us to share these blessings with others. As public service trusts to do your will, you know we don't always feel the same way about issues. Help us to come together to discuss issues in reflective and constructive ways. Help us- Lord, you know, we're gonna get it wrong sometimes. But, Lord, help us not to give up fight for you. Sometimes- Lord, help us even when we think we don't need it, especially when we feel like we don't want it. Thank you for this country, this state, and the county. Thank you for our current president, past president, future president, and the many other elected leaders, including those in this room, that have sacrificed their time and energy to do your will. Help us to remember, Lord, former Commissioner Antonio E. Blow's advice, when he reminded us that the work we have been elected to perform is not our own work, but yours and yours alone. With this prayer or not, I'm reminding the church sign at the end of Harper Street. Blessings are those who are called to serve through words, thoughts, action, and deed. Lord, we know at the end of the day, no matter what we lean as far as political party's opinions, you are in charge. Grant us your blessing, your almighty name. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. My chair evaded me. Oh, dear. Fellow commissioners, you have the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
Mr. Chairman, number seven, under County Manager's report, should read memorandum of understanding with the University of Mount Olah- not Mount Olah.
It is U M O, absolutely. Anything else?
No other corrections to the minutes, I mean, to the agenda, Mr. Chairman. I move to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Now, any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion. Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. We have the consent agenda. Is there a need for any change to the consent agenda?
Mr. DeHaven needs to tell who that has put that in.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Public comments?
Yes. First speaker is Tracy Keel.
This is where I stand?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm here for the person I need to recognize is back here in the back. So, Lemmy, if you would, stand up just a minute. Uh, like, a couple weeks ago, Derek sent me some pictures, uh, back when I was a deputy sheriff here in Green County, when we were going to the new campaign hats and stuff, me and Bill and a couple others was in the picture, and we were talking, and I started, because I had heard that Lemmy was retiring. And, uh, he asked me, he says, you're reading, uh, because I told him, I said, we all started together. And, uh, he said, you're ready, you could come down and share a few thoughts on Lemmy. I said, oh, I can share a lot of thoughts on Lemmy. But, uh, I remember on a, uh, Saturday afternoon, on a summer Saturday afternoon, Sheriff Whaley came up to me, he said, look, we got a new gentleman coming in today. He's coming out of the biker field, going home, take a bath, and he'll meet you around seven o'clock. So, I was sitting there waiting, and, uh, at the time, this gentleman right here come walking out of the back of the sheriff's office with early weather. And he introduced myself, and, and, and we started our career right there, me and him did, uh, as deputy sheriffs. Um, Lemmy, you always inspired me. Uh, even after I left Green County, and I know you went over to Pitt County for a while, and then you come back home to Green County. I always considered Green County as home. And, uh, somebody asked me, said, how can you consider Green County home? I said, because every morning when I get up, I check the obituary on the computer to see who's passed in Green County. So, uh, I love Green County, I spent all my life here up until, uh, year two thousand, then I moved. But, uh, you know, Lemmy's got, uh, thirty-eight years of law enforcement, and I've got thirty-six, and so he's beaten me by two. But, through my career, working with the state, and then retiring and went be a police chief and stuff, I had, uh, times I had to cross over the county line and, and, and pick up some people, uh, in Green County, and I would call Lemmy. And Lemmy never ever told me, you know, no, I can't help you, or call me back later. Uh, he was always there for me, and I come down one day, I just wanted to see the new sheriff's department. Lemmy made time and showed me around, and I could tell that the energetic of him having a new jail, a new sheriff's department, things, how it came. We were just talking with the county manager just a few minutes ago, when we come in, uh, the dispatcher was the jailer, and you had one phone for the fire and one phone for the sheriff's department. I'm telling you, I'm proud. Um, I've got, I've worked all over the state with other sheriffs, and they always ask me, where are you from? And I say, Green County. Well, Lemmy Smith's the sheriff. I said, I know Lemmy very well. I have to tell this story, because when people ask me about Lemmy, they say, well, what do you remember about Lemmy? I said, I remember a lot of good things. I said, but everybody has got a story. I've got one over at the new, I mean, at the county complex, there's probably a table over there that still got a bullet hole in it. And, uh, me, Sheriff Whaley, and Ted Solis was over there putting on a gun safety course, and, uh, sheriff handed me a gun, and I had it pointed down, and I was showing how to ratchet back, and when I ratchet back, it went off. And they thought it was a blank. Now, I was already three shades red, and I was just standing there looking, and the sheriff told them all, we'll take a break. So, everybody's got a time in their law enforcement career that you kind of, you know, life about it after all. Lemmy, and we were just talking about it a few minutes ago, he, uh, had just started working, uh, I think Bill was working with him some, but I had just gone to the county from the town. And I was over in Walstonburg, and Lemmy stopped his car right on the bypass of thirteenth. And, uh, all at once, he got on the radio, said the guy's jumping and running. Well, we knew who it was after we run the last plate. Well, on the way there, Lemmy was running. You could hear, he was, he was just going on, and he was out of breath, and he was running down the embankment by the creek. And all at once, we heard something go, ta, ta, ta. Well, it wasn't long before Sheriff Whaley was on the radio, he was checking on. So anyhow, we all get there, and of course, we never caught the guy, because when Lemmy went ta, 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 that just put him in another gear. We caught him later, because we knew who it was. But I remember the sheriff and early, uh, Wesley Oakley was a trooper, and he was there, and we were all standing beside the road there. And, uh, we said, Lemmy, you know, why'd you shoot your gun? He said, well, on TV, if you shoot your gun, it slows them down. So in Green County, it only makes them go faster. So anyhow, that was just one of the time. But Lemmy, you had a very, very long professional career. The things that you done for this county, uh, sitting back talking to people. You had bumps in the road, and of course, every sheriff does. But, um, I just want to tell you from, from my heart, I appreciate everything you done. Uh, when my dad was living here, and my mama, before they passed, uh, you know, if I needed something, you go by and check on it, or you'll send a deputy go by and check on it. I never forgot that. And I just want to tell you, I'm proud of you, I'm glad that, that you made it through retirement, and, uh, whatever you do from here on out, I wish you the best of all.
Uh, Mr. Bill Keel.
I want to thank everybody for allowing me to come forward to give this tribute to Lemmy. Uh, I started Indy County in January nineteen eighty as a deputy, uh, stayed there for till eighty-six, where I left and went with the state. Uh, I could probably come up with more stories about these guys than they even want me to tell. But one thing I remember, uh, I classify myself as Lemmy's field training officer when he first come on. Lemmy impressed me as someone that was dedicated. This was not just a job with him. It was not something that he gets a paycheck once a month, or every two weeks, however it was. To him, this was a, uh, dedicated service to the community. And I've been living in Green County since nineteen seventy-eight, and as long as Lemmy's been the sheriff, I never had an occasion to where I didn't need to call him, call him at home, at the office, go by the office or see him, that he wasn't available. He was always there for the public. That was his job, to be there for the public. So Lemmy, I'm gonna cut it short. I told you, I ain't gonna tell everybody your nickname. And I'm in it, but I want to wish you the best in your retirement, and enjoy it just as much as I've enjoyed my retirement. And God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray Johnson.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
Uh, Lemmy, uh, well, Sheriff Smith has been a friend of mine for way over forty years. When he started his career here in Green County, I think it was the second night, Lemmy rode with me, I was training him, I had just graduated from B.L.A. So all of us had a vital role in training Lemmy before he went into basic law enforcement. And I would have never imagined that the guy that I was training would one day become the high sheriff of Green County. But he did. Uh, he's held that job for twenty-three years, longer than anybody else in this county. He's been a friend of mine and to my family, uh, for a very long time. Even swearing my youngest son in as a deputy in two thousand and seventeen. Now for a little story. Second night we worked together, me and Lemmy were talking, and I asked him, did you know how to take somebody out in the patrol car if they wouldn't get out in the car if they wouldn't get out? He said, not really. So pulled in a parking lot, I got out in the car, he got in the driver's seat, and we played that role. Well, as we were playing that role, the future choice words were saying. And I'll say, you hear somebody on the other part of a handheld radio. Lemmy had his knee on the mic, it was keyed, and we didn't know it. But it was funny after it all happened. It wasn't funny when it first happened, but it was, it was pretty funny after it happened. Uh, that was my story with Lemmy. And Sheriff, in closing, I want to thank you for your thirty-nine years of service. Uh, it's been a dedication to the citizens of Green County, and I hope you really enjoy your retirement, and I'm glad to call you my friend. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, I got some stories too. I'm here for business, I'm sorry. Sheriff, congratulations again. All right, so, uh, I come up, I want to touch on some things from last time. Uh, I know, okay, I came up last time and rushed through three minutes trying to show you that I was the best candidate for sheriff of Green County. All right, so when I got home, I started doing my research. Uh, if you go to the Sheriff's Association webpage and look on their webpage, there's actually a pamphlet that shows, a manual for a vacancy in the office of sheriff. All right, I know in our minutes last time, we showed that, uh, we all agreed as a board that, uh, Matt Sasser will become the interim sheriff or acting sheriff after Lemmy Smith retires on the twenty-eighth. There is no such position in law. Nobody can become an acting sheriff or interim sheriff. We're holding an election. On the seventh, you will vote who you want to be sheriff. So, uh, the chief deputy will step up just like he does if the sheriff's sick or on vacation. He's gonna be the chief deputy filling in as if, as if the sheriff's not in office. All right? All right, so that brings me to another thing, the closed session tonight, to discuss personnel items. If we're going to discuss the candidates in the sheriff's election, I believe this should be an open, uh, session. The reason for that is, it's not personnel. I do not work for the county. James Harper does not work for the county. There's only one candidate that actually works for the county, and he's going for an elected position that does not work for the county. He's elected by the people at the county to fill a position. So, some people might say that you already made your mind up with how fast the, uh, changes came about. Uh, from the notification Thursday night to Monday, we're having a meeting to appoint interim sheriff. So this closed session, maybe you trying to save face. People might say that, right? But that's on you. At the end of the day, when you come out of this closed session with your decision, you guys stand flat-footed and tell people how you felt and why you made your decision. It reminds me of Proverbs twenty-eight one, "The wicked flee when no man pursueth, but the righteous are bold as a lion." So when you come out of this meeting, you should be able to stay, stand flat-footed and tell any member of this county or citizen of this county why you chose the person that you did. Thank you.
What was that verse again?
Proverbs twenty-eight one.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll declare the public comments section closed. At this time, we'll have our presentation by Ms. Emma Hardy and Caitlin Taylor.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good morning.
I hope you're all doing good today.
Doing great.
So I've come to tell y'all about some of the stuff that we have upcoming and some of the stuff that we're doing, just to keep y'all in the loop. Um, at the minute, we have twenty-seven members ranging from freshmen to seniors. We've got FFA week coming up, which I know that some of y'all like to participate in. Um, and we love to have y'all participate, and we love to repost you on our Instagram. On Monday, we have, or today, we have Take a Picture with Your Favorite Animal Day. Tuesday is America Day, and we're going to our first baseball game at Green Central. Wednesday, we have the muddy truck contest and camo day. On Thursday, we have Wear Your FFA Shirt of Blue and Gold. Friday, we have Drive Your Traitor to School Day and Dress as Your Favorite Ag Career. And then we have, on Saturday, the Paramount Swine Jackpot Show, which we're going to watch and get experience. It'll be at nine o'clock a.m. in Johnston County. We also have the Pig Project going on. We have seven kids participating, and we have six, we have six pigs altogether. We have four at school, and then I have two at my house. So the first show that we have coming up is March fifth and sixth at the East Coast Extravaganza in Rocky Mount. Then on March- Uh, last Thursday, we made efforts to recruit upcoming high-
All right. Have a motion to approve it, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution which indeed does say the nineteenth through twenty-sixth. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the choose.
Good luck with all your endeavors.
I want to let you know right here, first my favorite animal on Instagram today.
Yes, I would, we love to see it.
Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Our first order of business for this evening is a budget amendment needed for the Emergency Telephone Systems Fund. Um, annually, we run, um, Emergency Telephone Systems Fund, Fund sixteen, and some expenses are eligible, some are not eligible. These change routinely, and this year, three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars was spent from the ETSF fund that did not meet eligibility. So I'm asking for a budget amendment to balance that account out so that our balance maintains balance with the N C nine-one-one fund in Raleigh. This actually happens every year. Their rules change that frequently. Um, we are really working to maintain a better dialogue with them on what is changing so that we can avoid this. I will say in my seven years, this is the least the balance has been in those years, and I'll say this is the most proactive we have been in trying to keep the two balances in balance. So I do feel like this is, uh, it's like the final step in a process to maintain balance in the fund. So this is an improvement, and we will continue to improve.
And what's the grand total?
Uh, three thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents.
Move to approve the, uh, budget amendment for the nine-one-one.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. My next item for action is a budget amendment for the EMS department. Um, this budget amendment is needed to properly account for a lease agreement for our Zoll monitors. If you recall, we have them on a three-year lease. Um, the law has recently changed, which is GAZB eighty-seven, and GAZB is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And, uh, to properly account for this lease agreement in our audits, um, we are doing a budget amendment that will capitalize the lease. Are there any questions?
Fund balance appropriated is in parentheses, is that-
Negative.
So you're taking that away?
It adds money back into the fund balance out of, uh, the appropriated fund balance in the revenue expenditure budget.
Right. So does that total equal?
Um, this is all Fund eleven, so in Fund eleven, there is a, an increase of one hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars.
So when you say it's negative, when you add one thirty-nine, four eighty, and forty-two thousand, do you get one seventy-two nineteen?
Um, I don't know. I thought we had taken the totals out to lessen the confusion, but apparently it's gonna cause more confusion. Uh, off the cuff, though, one eighty, yeah, I think that adds up.
Well, it's four eighty dollars and cents, and then-
Okay, well, let's go ahead and add it up.
Eleven, one eighty-one. Mr. Chairman, your math whiz.
I have it at one seventy-two, nine eighteen.
And that's what taken away, the eighty-five, sixty-two?
It is.
Yeah.
So it was right.
Move to approve the budget amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a- Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Any other questions? Or discussion? I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next is a resolution for the East Carolina Council of Governments. Um, briefly, this resolution is, uh, concerning, um, their lack of providing some of the administrative services that they had in the past. They had a couple bad leaders. Um, they are trying to comparably become a council of government like others around us, and, uh, this is just a resolution, resolution for support of their endeavor to do so.
Move to support the resolution, to support the East Carolina Council of-
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
What is- If this new administration don't provide the service that we expect and provide, if there is any way out in the future?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And what is our yearly payment to the East Carolina Council of Government?
I want to say we make two payments. One is for the Area Agency on Aging, and one is for, uh, the RPO. I want to say combined, it's thirteen thousand and change.
Something like that, yeah.
It really is a, uh, a bargain, but there are just other administrative services that they generally provide.
And that was my next question, what services do they provide for thirteen thousand dollars?
They, what, do they provide for thirteen thousand? Um, they are our Area Agency on Aging contacts and the Rural Transportation Plan, Planning Organization.
But if they're restructuring, what have they not been doing that they should be doing?
Um, there are some planning functions, some grant writing functions, some general communication functions, where people in the region, because the Council of Governments is a regionalized board and government, um, some of that has not been taking place, and some of the members are wanting it to take place. So this is a, a resolution of support as they try to restructure and, um, meet the need, I guess.
It's all about restructuring.
Yeah.
And they got that from a consultant, is that not correct?
That's right.
Yes. Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, next item for action is approval of an RFQ for, um, internal air quality and heating, ventilation, air conditioning services. Um, an RFQ was put out, and three responses were received. A team was put together and scored the RFQs. Uh, the highest scoring respondent was Piedmont Service Group. I have an average of the scores, um, uh, in your agenda packet, and I would recommend awarding the RFQ to the high score, and that you direct me to begin the process of pricing out different, uh, internal air quality and heating, ventilation, air conditioning projects.
Is there an asset request to give you a blank check to provide this level?
Nope. Nope. I'm asking you to approve the process that was gone through, the request for qualifications, and allow me to start negotiating with them for specified projects. So let's say we were, if this wasn't a new building, we were going to quote this out or receive a proposal for this, I would bring you a proposal from this building or for this building when I received it. And then at that time, you could say yes or no.
So who are our score with this? Just one person, three people?
There were three people.
So our three people gave Peak a zero on ability to maintain equipment after the breach?
I'm sorry, say it again?
And all three people also gave Peak a zero for familiar required facility and equipment.
Mm-hmm, yes.
They also gave him a zero on past performance, but it was understandable.
Yeah.
And this, this doesn't give me no guarantee that this probably a true proposal can best qualify it. I mean, this is, this is very biased, um, I mean-
I don't think it's biased, I just, the company Peak that you're referencing has no history with the county, therefore the respondent, or the scores for the respondent saw that there was no past performance. Okay?
So if they've never worked with Green County and in their past, they're automatically a zero?
In an RFQ, yes. It's all about a relationship.
My, my question is, is number three, it's the same thing as, uh, Commissioner Burris was talking about, familiarity with client facilities and equipment.
Uh-huh.
Again, to me, that benefits our past, I'm assuming Piedmont has our contracts to maintain our, our equipment at this time.
Currently, yes.
So they got a heads up with a twenty, and Brady got a twelve point thirty-three.
Brady. Yep, they, they used to service, but if you recall, there are companies located out of Greensboro, North- of Greensboro, North Carolina, and we were charged a very large mobilization fee when they had to come work on our stuff. Do you remember that, Sheriff? Brady used to service our...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, like I said, to me, that is, uh, taking the companies that you have done your RFQ for's and eliminated one, two, based on their familiarity with the facilities and equipment. Is that a just question to ask?
I believe it is.
So, you're going to just get quotes from Piedmont?
Yes. We're going to receive quotes from Piedmont for different functions and different departments that are in need of air conditioning and HVAC services.
But again, do we not try to get three quotes?
That's for an RFP.
RFQ.
This is RFQ.
Qualifications.
Mine's on. I might be scooting back too far to see. Keeps rolling back.
Understandable.
You would think I'd have enough fat on these thighs to do something. But, um, I just feel like number three is, and when you take out number three, everything else is the same.
Okay.
I mean, when you're looking at RFQ, I just don't know if that's something to base on whether they could do the work or not. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
And I would like three quotes, not one.
I mean, other than, other than what you have here, how, how are we gonna make a decision on who might be the best one? I mean, you don't...
Well, if you take out number...
Unless, unless you just pick out someone randomly, because he got a score here. Got 10, 15, 20. So, I mean, what other...
Mr. Vice Chair, if you take out question number three, they're the same, all the way down.
I know, but still, and still, what, how are you gonna...
But why could you not get quotes from both of those? I mean, they're the same all the way down, except question number three.
I'm gonna read, I'll read this thing out the bottom. The evaluation by, number one, qualifying personnel. Number two, past performance with Green County. Number three, familiar with client facility and equipment. Number four, proximity to client. Number five, ability to maintain equipment after project's completion. And number seven, experience with similar work. We have one that's almost got a perfect score. We have one that's a little bit under. And the third one, question, pretty much full of zeros, where, with a couple of ones.
That's right. That's how a ranking works for an evaluation of a request for qualification.
So, so, all you people who have done this evaluation sheet gave one, two, three zeros on, on three things?
That's right.
So, how am I going to go back to Sheriff, if Sheriff Apple, I'm just using it as a, Sheriff Apple as a city? How am I going to be able to tell Sheriff that this is the most qualified person based on this? I can't do it.
As a citizen or as a commissioner?
If somebody in the public asked me, how am I going to be sure, 100% sure, that the town is getting the best deal based on this criteria? How am I going to be able to tell them that we got the best deal?
So, in a request for a proposal, you're looking for a, the best deal, or the lowest cost for the provision of service, low-cost provider, et cetera. This is a request for qualification. Because there's an engineering aspect to this service, it falls under the Mini Brooks Act.
Do you think basically, when a group can, can be a sub qualification?
No. Under the Mini Brooks Act, that's for architects, engineers, and surveyors. You have to do a request for qualification. So, by performing this RFQ, we're just following the law. If you recall, we did it for this building, too, and I think that we went with the initial company, initial architecture firm, and then after negotiation, we didn't go with them. We went back to the second one, Summit Engineering, Summit Architectural Engineering, and we negotiated with them, and we actually went to contract with them. So, this is just the, the function, the process of how an RFQ works.
So, basically, if I was in a market for a new car that has green, blue, and red one, because I have a biased opinion, I want a red car, I, I should give the other ones the zeros and stuff? That's what you're done. I feel you're done.
I, I think that's...
No, the...
Madam Attorney.
The, the statutes actually require, in the cases of...
I'm not questioning what the statute says. I'm saying, this, this, this thing is biased.
Well, that is not my place to argue, since I'm not a member of the board. But as far as the actual procedure, a car is not a good analogy, because a request for qualifications has to be done in an instance where you need engineering, architectural, surveying, specific professional service. And in that situation, the local government is required to do a request for qualifications, look at the actual qualifications of everyone interested in performing and providing that to the county, and go with the best qualified rather than the lowest bidder, which is the case in almost every other situation. For example, buying a car, if the county were purchasing vehicles, the county would be looking for, well, there would potentially be something in between a, a bid. There wouldn't be a request for qualifications. There'd be some requests for proposals.
And we would be required to go the low-cost, responsible, responsive bidder.
Exactly. And the requirement actually is the opposite on the county with a request for qualifications. The county has to go with the most qualified versus lowest.
The county attorney, number three, has nothing to do with qualifications of personnel. That's number one. Number two, number five, number seven, number four, has nothing. Number three has nothing to do with qualifications.
I think it has to do with familiarity of the client, the facilities, and the equipment, which is why it was inserted as number three.
But I'm saying, everything else is the same.
We want to make sure that the company knows what we have when, so when they go bid on it, that, because there will be a bidding process.
You don't think they will come here to bid on it?
I do. I do. But if they already have familiarity with it, that gives them a leg up in the process.
So, are we getting more than one bid?
Um, not in an RFQ. If, if we don't like the bids from the first person that is, or, um, company that's selected.
Which is Piedmont.
Will go to the second company, just like we did for this facility.
And maybe I should clarify. You're not required to hire the best qualified, but that's who you...
Start with.
But again, if we're gonna not take but one bid from Piedmont, we're not gonna know what the bids are.
No, you're not. That is...
That is not gonna be, show us a comparison.
Rather strange thing about...
So, if we agree to do this tonight, Piedmont will be the only one that bids on the project. And if we don't like that, then we ask somebody else.
You will not be bound by that. The board will be able to...
But we're gonna not know, we're not gonna know what somebody else would bid if we don't give them that chance. That's right. There's no comparison here. And I appreciate the time the committee did to take it. And I don't know any of these companies, per se, but again, question number three is what separated them, and that has nothing to do with qualifications or personnel. Which is what you were saying, that the law talked about, having qualified personnel, which is number one. Both of them got, all three of them got the same thing.
Well, more than qualified personnel, but I, I certainly, I, I see your point. It's up to, I think, the board to decide who is the most qualified. I think this is a point system that eliminates, if that's fair.
So, do we have to do this process?
You have to do this process when it involves engineering, surveying, or, um, architect.
With no cost associated?
With no cost associated, you have to look first at submit how best qualified to basically engineer the HVAC systems and install them with the company, the proposal that's...
Which again, goes back to number three. The only difference, that has nothing to do with what you just said.
I'm glad it could differentiate between the companies, then. I'm glad it was there.
But it's, it's unfair to Brady scoring them down on those three things.
I say it's more fair to Piedmont, because we are up to score them up, because they are familiar with our facilities and our equipment.
That's right. You, you said that correctly.
Thank you.
It's more fair to Piedmont than it is to Brady.
Right. I don't see it as unfair at all.
Move to approve the score for the RFQ, Mr. Chairman.
And direct the manager to begin negotiations.
And direct the manager to begin negotiating.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
For discussion, Madam Attorney. In your, in, in, in your opinion, is this process legal?
This process is not only legal, it is required, although I cannot explain. I'm sorry. I didn't have my mic on.
I heard you.
It, it is required, and I cannot explain why it is required in this state, but that is what our legislature has chosen.
It is legal and is required.
Yes, sir.
Are you having any issues? Are you having any issues going with this?
Not, uh, not so far.
And again, this is qualifications and not the proposals for the actual dollars being spent.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? We will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay. I think the question is unfair.
Thank you.
Two nays, three ayes. Okay, thank you.
Next item for action is approval, approval of a purchase of an ambulance in the next fiscal year. We have an opportunity to order an ambulance now, and it can be delivered in July, I was told, July of 2022. Basically, we're getting bumped in the queue for somebody who has fallen out, is the way I understand it. If you recall, we received some grant funding that will cover 63, 63% of the purchase of this ambulance, with the county covering the remaining 37.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second, man.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, then. He's asking words to money coming from.
So, we received some SCIF money, state capital in, infrastructure funds from the state of North Carolina for ambulances, from our legislators. Now, I was also made aware that those funds are not actually eligible SCIF funds, but if we, we can supplant some of our operational costs, and with the freed-up operational costs monies, we can purchase the ambulance.
Is the best protective money that the state legislator put aside for specific purpose, moving around with a different account to push the avalanche?
It's not a different account, but it's a, a different purpose. Yes.
Is that allowed? Have you ran it by the state legislator or attorney?
I, no. I don't talk to attorneys, and I don't talk to legislators. I spoke to the Office of State Budget Management, who does the funding for the legislators, and they said, that is the way to go. They, that is what I'm being advised to do.
So, the legislature says, give $10,000, we have the State Office of Budget Management and approved us to move this money around.
I didn't understand the question.
The general assembly says this money has to go toward avalanche, the State Office of Budget Management, the state, you just made around.
Well, that was a question that I had, actually, and they said that sometimes things get put in the budget that aren't maybe 100% correct, but they told me how to correct it, and that is the process that I'm trying to recommend we go through.
Can you give us a price? There's no price here.
$275,000 is total price for the ambulance.
I'm assuming that's not a remount?
No, ma'am. We don't qualify for remounts anymore. Ours have, uh, the remounts are, are done.
That's a turnkey job.
It, it is a turnkey job, yes.
That's a new one.
And that's replacement or new?
That's a new one.
That's a new ambulance.
Totally new.
But is it in within our fleet? Is it replacing one we already have, or is it adding to our fleet?
I would say it's going to replace an ambulance in our fleet at this time.
So, it's a replacement of one that we already have?
Yes.
At a cost of 275?
Yes.
Again, tell me why remounts, we're not eligible for remounts anymore?
Each, each chassis is only eligible to be remounted three times, and I believe our ambulances have met that totality requirement.
You shaking your head, Mr. Kearney? So, all our ambulances have been remounted three times?
They have.
And that's four have been remounted three times?
Three have, one is still eligible to be remounted. However, that's the newest one we purchased in 2020.
Madam Attorney, what do you think about this program running around?
Well, my, my understanding of the way supplanting works, the best example would be sort of what was done when the board was considering a COVID bonus for the employees, and some employees qualified to get that bonus directly from COVID funds, and other money was COVID fund money, but it was to replace losses of revenue in the general fund, and so other bonuses had to come from that loss of revenue. And that is how the supplanting, that term, works. There is money, SCIF funds available that can be used to cover operations cost, and then that frees up budget money will not be spent on operations cost now because of this available funding. So, the county has that funding available to use as the county wishes, and purchasing an ambulance would be the way to do that.
And this is in next year's budget?
That is, I believe, where the county manager wants to put it.
Yes, that's right.
Have a, I'm gonna call the question. I have a motion on the floor in a second. Is here are no further discussion. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Man, I'd just like to say, it, it's good to get this type of money so that we can use it for a good benefit in the county.
I agree. Chairman Heath and I had that conversation in my office the other day.
We did.
It's nice to get money from other sources.
And it's nice to be proactive instead of reactive.
That's right. That's right.
We are planning for the future. We're going to have a greater need in the future for our ambulances, and we are planning for the future.
Thank you, sir.
And we're lucky that we got this one in place to get it by July 1st, too.
Exactly.
But again, we're gonna have to replace three more?
Eventually.
Well, it's almost like the sheriff's department cars. I mean, they have to be replaced in a rotation.
That's, that's right. That's right. Thank you. Our next item for action is a memorandum of understanding with the Greg Isley Firm. This firm will provide accounting oversight. Currently, we are without a finance officer. Ms. Beverly Stroud has moved on to a, a, a different opportunity. She had done a lot for us. I can't thank her, and I appreciate her so much. This MOU is with the Isley Firm, and it's just a contractual agreement of what services they will provide at what cost, with a limit or do not exceed until we can get that next qualified person in that chair.
And limit's 30,000?
That's right.
And on page two, it says a professional staffing contract addendum is attached to and is made part of this engagement letter. Do we have that?
Uh, no, I don't have a professional staffing contract addendum.
Is that not what it says?
It does say that, but I don't have one of those.
This is the same program that's going to work, isn't it?
It is.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to simply state, state, we know where we have been in needs in this county for appropriate accountability from the finance department. We need to maintain, we are up, we have gotten to a professional level. We've done well. We need to maintain that. And this is what this will do. It'll keep us, keep the ship. It's uprighted. It'll keep it afloat.
That's right.
Do we have applicants for that position?
We are receiving applicants at this time.
Do we have a close-off date? Do we have a close off date?
When enough qualified applicants have applied.
And that number where is?
Can't tell you at this time.
So you don't know how many applications you gotta have to look at them?
I I do.
And that number is?
Yeah, five.
Five. And you have this time, how many?
I'd have to check.
I'm gonna call the question. I have a motion on the floor in a second. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The House have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir. My last item for action tonight is a memorandum of understanding with the University of Mount Olive. I know I wrote Mount Olive College in error. Forgive me. What this memorandum of understanding does is provide a reduced tuition rate for Green County employees. As long as we allow the University of Mount Olive, U M O, to promote and recruit our employees to go to school there. So it's it's really a simple M O U.
And just as a matter of statement, the M O U does have U M O on it. It does not have Mount Olive.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got that confused.
Understand. Understand.
Is this plan to the personnel policy of eight hundred dollars? For educational purposes?
There are rules to the education reimbursement policy, but I don't see why it wouldn't.
Well, I'm just asking. I knew there was eight hundred dollars. The problem we've had sometimes with the other ones is they have been paid to take a class. Either dropout or whatever. So that puts an extra burden on the finance department to pay back taxes and retirements.
You're right.
So we need to basically look at that issue that I think is an A or a B on those requirements in the personnel policy. That they follow those guidelines before they're given eight hundred dollars for the county for the class. I guess one of the other questions. When you go through and read through the tuition scholarships. In order to have a thirty percent tuition. They have to be enrolled in twelve units per semester. At the undergraduate level or nine per graduate at the graduate level to receive the thirty percent. Participants enrolled in less than state benefit minimums will receive a ten percent tuition scholarship. So if they are working, I find it very hard to be carrying twelve hours.
Yeah, I agree.
A semester.
Although possible, most likely not probable. So you're right.
So this is a ten percent tuition scholarship for the ones that take less than twelve.
Twelve hours.
Ten percent rate reduction.
Any way we can help them, I'm in favor of.
Well, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of it, but but reading the fine print sometimes means something different. Does L C C not have this available?
They don't have this specific program available. Generally, if a county employee wants to take a course with L C C, they'll work with the individual to come up with a reduced rate or sometimes even a free rate.
You gotta try to get them to tuition if they can.
That's right.
Qualify for.
That's right.
And I'm assuming they do a different programs?
So.
Mount Olive is a four year.
Lenore Community College is a two year community college. So in speaking with Dr. Hunt, because I want to speak to him about this because I think that's a professional courtesy.
I appreciate that.
He uh he said that he thought it was a great memorandum of understanding. But he was hoping that people would still go there for the first two years before transferring to the University of Mount Olive. And I completely understand where he was coming from. But this is an opportunity to help the employees if they choose to go to the University of Mount Olive. And if if you agree with me, then I'd hope that you would approve this memorandum of understanding.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Here in none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The House have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Sir, if I may, with a lot of these other sources of monies available to us. I would like to ask if you guys would like to have a a mini retreat in our conference room. I don't know, this week, next week, to go over some some sources and some uses.
I think that I think that would be a good idea.
So we can have a better understanding of supplanting and maybe some of that nature of business. And so that you guys can have a better idea of what's being recommended to us from the school of government, the local government commission. And we can come up with an actual plan of how you want some of these monies to be spent. And so that when someone on the street asks you, you can tell them with confidence what's going on with it.
And I think that the Department of Technology would be a valuable source. I've looked at several of their slides. That talks about different areas for the A R P fundings. I just need to do it before two o'clock.
Well, we can do it in the morning. I like donuts.
Not this week.
Not this week.
No, not this week.
Donuts. I want a biscuit.
You would. Let's see. Well. If we don't decide tonight, then let's come up with a day and let's do this sooner than later. So that we can have a plan and that everybody's on the same page and we can move forward with it.
We need to do that.
So you're gonna get that to us?
I can. And if I may, one more thing is, you know, we've been in this facility having our meetings since the beginning of January. I think we're at a point where I think a grand opening, we're due for a grand opening. Let's go ahead and do that.
You got the flag poles up yet?
They're being dug tomorrow.
Okay, well, let's make sure everything's in place before we ever.
Of course, of course. So you'll be hearing information or receiving information from me about that.
Are the flag poles going up tomorrow?
Yes, they're being auggered tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's all I have for you. So be expecting to hear from me about those things. Thank you.
Well, with a ribbon cutting, I'd like to go ahead and have it sooner than later. I mean, we were in here, we're operating out of here, and we're going to do some more things in here, but.
Yeah.
We are functional. We are operating.
And I would also say I'd like to have it before E nine one one goes in here. Because I want the community and those who come to be able to see the equipment and go in the room. When E nine one one comes and is functioning here, they will not be allowed in there. That will be uh that will be off limits.
I'll just throw something out. How about Commissioner Blizzard would like to have it perhaps in the morning, about eleven o'clock next Wednesday? That's nine days from now.
Okay.
Wednesday at eleven?
Wednesday at eleven.
That's uh is that March second?
March the second.
Okay. We can we say we'll tentatively plan for that?
We will tentatively plan. If someone comes up with a with a issue, just let us know. But we're gonna tend to tentatively say eleven o'clock next Wednesday.
We'll do our part.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Madam County Attorney, do you have anything else to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. First, if I could address the Greg Isley contract. If the chairman or the county manager before you sign it, if you'll just strike that questionable paragraph. Since there is no addendum attached to the contract and initial there. I think that will remedy and identify that there was no addendum attached to our letter of engagement.
Okay.
With regards to the appointment and discussion regarding appointment of a sheriff. I have reached out to Eddie Caldwell, who is general counsel and a board member for the North Carolina Sheriff's Association.
And they're under the Department of Justice, right?
Yes. He has been most helpful and most kind. As he acknowledged, this is a once in a career thing that I will probably deal with. Whereas it's a three or four times a year event for him. He is very familiar with how all the counties are handling it. Pursuant to one sixty-two dash five, as we've been over before. It is the place of the Board of County Commissioners to fill a vacancy when it arises due to the retirement of the sheriff. The board can do that at any time. We do not have to wait for it to actually be vacant. However, the board, upon making a motion and determining who would be appointed sheriff. Must make that motion contingent to not take effect until the office is vacant. Have to allow for the fact that Sheriff Smith might surprise us and decide to rescind his resignation and stay with us. And he has the right to do that. And so there is no timeline that this cannot be done until March seventh. Mr. Caldwell does say that has not been tested in our appellate courts, and I was aware of that before I talked to him. I had run the statute through fast case and various case searches. And it has not been appealed, but that is something that has been done in is the sort of standard operating procedure in the counties in North Carolina as to how it has been handled. With regards to the chief deputy filling the sheriff's role, that is exactly what will happen if no one is appointed at the time Sheriff Smith resigns. There will just simply not be a sheriff until a new sheriff is appointed and sworn in. And that's fine because the chief deputy will fulfill the role of sheriff. The county will be able to move forward. With regards to whether the appointment should be a public or personal or closed session under personnel. The motion to make the appointment should definitely be made in a public hearing for the public to hear. However, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven. Which is closed sessions. States that a public body may hold a closed session and exclude the public only when a closed session is required. Go down to number six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment. Or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. An appointment, when you are considering those personal matters that you would consider the same for an employment. An employee for an appointed office. Qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and the conditions of it are to be held in closed session. So the board will not be hiding anything or running from the public. This is actually the board performing its duty to discuss qualifications and character and fitness in a closed session. Of course, the board does not just have to discuss the candidates who have offered themselves up to this board as wishing to be discussed. The board has the power to appoint anyone that the board so wishes to appoint. And that, of course, falls under section one sixty-two dash five. The only hindrance on the board is one sixty-two dash two, which lists the disqualifications for office. And that is, I don't know why they turned it that way. They could have just said qualifications. It'd be a little easier. The person must be twenty-one years of age, cannot have been convicted of a felony, must be a qualified voter in the county. And must be able to produce the disclosure statements prepared by the North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards Commission that I believe we were discussing last time the board met. Additionally, North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash twenty-five allows the board to make any other qualifications for any appointive office that the board so desires to make. So if there are qualifications beyond those stated in one sixty-two dash two. The board may determine what qualifications the board wants since this is an appointive office. I think that is about everything.
It's a lot.
Yes, it is. There there's more, but we can discuss that at a later time. As far as the need for scheduling a swearing in. Provided Sheriff Smith does retire and we have a new sheriff to appoint. The deputies will often have to be re sworn and such as that, but we can get to that at a later time.
So indeed, it's not illegal for us to have a closed session tonight to discuss these things?
It it is not at all legal, and in fact, it is most appropriate considering the aspects of character and fitness that the board would need to consider the same as an employee. And the statutes are clear that an appointive office is to be treated the same as employee for the purpose of closed sessions.
Thank you. Commissioner reports some recommendations.
I want to take a moment to congratulate the assistant basketball team for being a second in the conference tournament, connecting it to the playoffs again this year. The Rams and the Giants playoff competition is based on manager Tuesday at six o'clock. I want to congratulate Grand Central City and Drake and Beamer for success on the Russian match. Beamer won the conference championship in two A region, qualified as state tournament champion before he finished eighth in the overall competition. I certainly recognize Lyndon Burton, Kansas Harbor, and Brean Mary, former athletes of the farm. I also have taken a moment to give thanks to several different groups, across my fellow county commissioners. For creating that last meeting to raise ticket fee for the house to elevate volunteers and renovate. Now called the Hope House, this house will be will now be used to help other families in need, what's the current level, able to land on their feet. I also want to thank Green Light for the donation of the solar charging station at the wellness center. I have used it twice since it was installed. I see many benefits, especially after storing where the power is out for prolonged periods of time. I also want to recognize the school system and the Grand Canyon business for stepping up in honor of the victims of the plane crash that occurred off the coast of the Pacific Ocean. The school system will camera in honor of the victim and symbolize national credit and jersey form, donated all the profits to the family. We have a couple of upcoming events I want to make sure everybody's aware of. On Wednesday, twenty-third, Mount Cavering is hosting a chili grilled cheese supper race, bronze for junior camp. On Saturday, twenty-sixth, there will be a blackfish from Mount parade downtown Snow Hill, starting at new operations in the field. The internet courthouse, I think Tyler is well aware of it. So I want to make sure if you have traveled in this direction, y'all know about it. Moving on to county business. As county managers, here this. I bet you're right. Moving on to county business, I want to remind citizens that the county has twenty-one vacant positions open, which can be reviewed on the county website, first flip page. You can also sign up for the county's new letter, which will keep you updated on any new open. The county has great benefits. As you saw tonight, we approved an agreement with the University of Mount Olive to provide scholarship for county authority. I've also gotten several complaints from concerned citizens about employees engaging in campaign related activities while on the clock for the county. And also while using county resources, specifically county vehicles. I want to encourage our leadership team to reach out to department heads and have them to remind and review with their employees that the county does have an electionary policy in place. At our last meeting, we received an update on the A R P fund. We also received an update on the broadband situation and an email explaining the administration's broadband interpretation. While I agree we should wait and see if the school system receives the N T I A grant. I want to go on record and say that I disagree with the interpretation provided at the last meeting. The local internet service providers currently providing broadband services using state and federal funds or ineligible county funding. If you review the PowerPoints in your email, which also which also contains snapshots of the legislation. It mentions projects and locations that have received state and federal assistance. Each project and grant application has a certain area of location on the county that these funds will go to and apply to. Those areas are the ineligible areas. There is my interpretation that the county can still partner with ISP in underserved areas. These underserved areas are specifically defined in General Statutes one forty-three B slash one thirteen seventy-three A fourteen, which I asked you to review this afternoon. In that same email, there is also a map from the North Carolina Department of Information Technology that shows which areas of county are considered to be underserved. I also disagree with hiring a consultant. It is a waste of funds hiring a consultant when the state already has information. And it is the state of the county that will ultimately decide where these funds will go. Why is we a victim where for somebody else going to be making the ultimate decision? I also want to point out that it was a special call meeting today in Pitt County. Commissioner of Pitt County set aside eight. .......................................................................................
Any other commissioner reports?
I think Ms. Smith's retirement's next March the 3rd.
March 3rd, 6:30.
Try not to forget that.
Yep.
Also, I'd like to mention Mr. Cash. I know that the Superior Court has redrawn district maps, but they've also opened filing fee periods. Can you go over what those filing fees, filing periods are?
As of right now, opens up on Thursday at 8:00 a.m. and closes next Friday at 12:00 p.m. as of right now.
And if anybody wants to withdraw, they have until when?
They have to close the business on Tuesday. They have to March 1st close the business.
And I also want to talk about the ARP funds. I know Mr. Taven has, has mentioned this several times and has sent an email, but the key to me is the service provided in the unserved areas. It is not talking about a provider that has provided internet to our county, is that we have unserved areas in our county that do not have internet. So according to, as you said, the laws that were passed by the General Assembly, House Bill DRH 104559-MQA-113, and also 153A-159, when he grants a order pursuant to this section after the date this section becomes effective, the term "unserved areas" shall not include any location where a private provider has been designated to receive funds through state or federal funded programs. So they cannot receive funds if that's already been provided by that provider with state and federal funds. But we still have unserved areas in Green County that we could use some ARP funds for. Again, slide presentations from the County Commissioners Association, from Department of Technology, have those, and Pitt County is spending $8 million from ARP for internet service. I'm assuming it's for unserved areas that I think we need to look into that and spend some of that ARP money for internet services. And I've not promised Jeremy Rich a dime, as it has been said before. So if the provider in this county with high-speed internet, it needs to be looked at a map, and I'm sure our economic developer has unserved areas marked on a map that we could use some of this ARP money for.
We'll be happy to look at that.
To me, I think that's a vital campaign issue that the ARP funds that we broaden our internet service provider, whether it's Harvest Bean or Infinity. I think satellite at a pine tree and pine leaves bother. I don't think that's the best option to go for the county, but high-speed is.
Well, Pitt County appropriated $8 million. Are they gonna do that themselves, or they gonna give that to a contractor to do?
It says that it will be given to a...
How did they decide which one to give it to?
I have no clue.
Who solicited to them that they wanted?
Well, I wouldn't imagine anybody in Pitt County that don't have it. You think all of Pitt County?
What company is what I was asking? What company solicits?
It doesn't say what company, but it said how much they set aside that they wouldn't spend for water and sewer, they wouldn't spend for other items that are listed as liable expenses in the ARP. And as you said before, you do not think this is a great idea. And again, citizens of Green County are lacking, and internet's their top priority. If COVID didn't show us that, I don't know what is. Economic development to me is a need to bring businesses in. It just so happened the last one's right here in the town of Snow Hill. And I guess town of Snow Hill has internet service out there that they can use, so that was an issue with that. But anywhere else in the county, it will be.
There's a business in my district, they're thinking about moving, going somewhere else until they can't get the internet. They're in for it.
And I think, I think each grant, if my understanding is correct, has to tell the location that they will serve. So they can't take and say, "We're gonna put it up on 58 and put it out there on 13." They've gotta put it where the grant is applied for. So I'm also asking to look at the ARP funding at our mini-retreat and have the speakers or slideshows that's already been presented to discuss that further.
Mr. Charles, first of all, Mr. Frank, Frank.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I asked at last meeting if the school board knew or have any idea or whenever found out about that grant, that NTIA grant. Do you have any?
I know Patrick would have that information. I know there's been some discussion of it, but right now there's nothing for it. I know that it's released, other than discussion.
Would you repeat those initials again?
It's NTIA, I think it was for, is that correct, Frank?
I believe so.
And that's a federal program, is that correct?
Uh, thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Any other commissioner reports, recommendations? I will just give a brief update. The latest numbers that came out for COVID was on the 16th. And there's 5,721 cases, and has, we've had that many citizens in Green County that have COVID. Currently, there, at that time, there were 75 active, three in the hospital, seven in the congregant sitting, and now we have had 70 deaths in Green County as a result of COVID.
Move to go into closed session for personnel, Mr. Chairman?
Have a motion to go into closed session for personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none. Those who favor the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.